We call this regular council meeting to order if the clerk will take row.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Binge?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
First thing we have on the agenda is opening up in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the vision of liberty and justice for all.
Our apologies on the limitation of mics tonight. The people that usually do the sound for us when we're up here had another event, so we'll just have to share them tonight. So, the next thing on the agenda we have is approving the minutes from the July 7th meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Excuse me. Mr. Chair, I move to amend the agenda.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker? Mr. Binge?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
So, we have the minutes from the July 7th meeting.
Make the motion to approve those minutes?
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Binge?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Next thing on the agenda we have is the Myers-Baker Road Project. That's...
The next item should be old business, Section A, Ordinance 2025-04.
So you guys are doing away with all the other stuff?
Yes. This is our new agenda. We voted to amend the agenda.
Okay, so your old business is Development Ordinance 2025-04. What is council's pleasure on this ordinance?
I move to present Ordinance 2025-04 and present it for a vote.
I'll say it.
Mr. Ortega?
No.
Mr. Young?
No.
Mr. Baker?
No.
Mr. Binge?
Are we voting to not vote?
No.
No, I don't want to vote.
No.
No.
It is correct. This is the order that we passed previously until next month, six days.
No, this was... We were just voting Ordinance 2025-04.
Is it a vote or not?
It's a vote. The motion we present for a vote. Your attempt to present the ordinance and as for a vote upon the ordinance...
That's correct. My motion was to present the ordinance and... Was to present for a vote.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is 2025-05, the anti-bullying ordinance. What is council's pleasure there?
Mr. Chair, from my understanding, the Parattonian Conrad Sesta and Mayor Grayson spoke on this issue and I understand that it's become a dead issue, I guess, of the dead ordinance, is that correct?
No, we agreed to meet later to discuss it. We had also discussed the zoning ordinance and I'd understood from Mr. Sesta that he was going to talk with you all and see what changes you wanted to make in that, as well as the ethics ordinance. Did I misunderstand Conrad?
No, my understanding was your understanding of our conversation is correct on the development ordinance. My understanding of the bullying ordinance was that as it was written, it was not feasible that maybe go back to the drawing board and present a different one at a later time.
Yes.
So the one that was presented was not going to be pursued any longer, I guess would be the best way to articulate that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to present Ordinance 2025-04 and present for a vote.
You done did the four. You mean the five?
The five.
So 2025-05.
That's correct.
Okay.
Second.
Do your own.
Mr. Ortega?
No.
Mr. Young?
No.
Mr. Baker?
No.
Mr. Binge?
No.
Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Weaver?
The next thing on the agenda is the line of credit. What is council's pleasure on that?
I do have something to say about the line of credit. This is probably the item I receive the most called on. I haven't received one call in support of the city borrowing more money. Not one. So I vote... How I'm going to vote on this is the way that my constituents ask me to vote. So I move to vote. I move to present the mayor's request for line of credit for a vote.
Okay.
Mr. Ortega?
No.
Mr. Young?
No.
Mr. Baker?
No.
Mr. Binge?
No.
Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Weaver?
No.
I have a question. Can we change the agenda? Did that make this a special move? We can still call up things?
You could call up things, Stacy. It's a regular meeting.
I'm saying replace it, but there is a question that was on the agenda not for a duty call around every bus we truck. I would like to make a motion and we agree that they go that bit, they rent the truck out two weeks ago and they have to pay their insurance and they got all in line and they need to replace. It is making a motion that we... I want to get a motion to approve that.
Need a second?
Second.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Binge?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
And this, one of the items I could call up, the agenda, the Kentucky infrastructure building system agreement. I don't know if it's that down to look at, I don't know how you feel about it, but I finally got what that was today. That's a loan for the Kentucky infrastructure going to our water office to build, upgrade their water plants to accommodate facilities, a more large facility, which is safer. It does the, my understanding is the KIA, the warranty money is very low rate compared to almost nothing. It's a common thing. And that's what this grant is really good for. I did speak in town about the air. And I might make a motion to be why I want to do this, which is to get the state to the water office, borrow a little bit of money, and some of the Kentucky infrastructure. That's my understanding, is correct, is my loan.
That is correct. That's the utility commission.
I hate to put that on hold. It's a 16 years, it's this way. I don't like that. So I'm going to make a motion to approve that.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Binge?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is approve the new 911 interlocal agreement with Laurel County Physical Court?
I make a motion, we approve that agreement with Laurel County Physical Court.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Binge?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
So, I hate to keep bringing it up to the other agenda, but there's also a requirement to rank the Boone Trace Trail Program. I don't know if it's requiring another vote from us. It doesn't say what it's learning, but I don't want to delay it. You don't have to, the ranks take a long time, you can say all.
I want to table that until September.
Table it until September.
Got a motion to table?
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Binge?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Just letting her get called up here. We wasn't aware of this new agenda. On the old agenda, though, the Myers-Baker, you guys are not going to approve the state to fix that road?
I'm willing to make a motion that we accept that. I did talk to Black Office of the Navy, the Navy Road Board, who gave us about $129,000.
That is correct.
The investment that they've gotten from anything from about $136,000, we get a loan to the road back up by about $1,000. And I also want to do the, when they dig up the back top and haul it out, they will cover that.
They're milling it.
That's true.
Yes.
I hate to... I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second?
We include all costs.
That is all cost that the state had told us when they had assessed that it would cost to blacktop that road.
I'll say it.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Binge?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, resolution in issuing charges of misconduct and setting a public hearing pursuant to KRS 83A-0409. Attached is the resolution. If the clerk will read the resolution.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before that, I did notice when I was handed that, that the resolution number is not really consistent with the way that they're usually numbered. I think it should probably be numbered 2025-04, just for housekeeping purposes.
So probably be dash zero five because Daniel Boone is dash zero four.
Yes, sir.
Resolution issuing charges of misconduct and setting a public hearing pursuant to KRS 83A.0409, whereas KRS 83A.049, sorry, 0409, sets forth applicable provisions of law for the removal of any elected officer for misconduct, incapacity, or willful neglect, and whereas KRS 83A.0409 provides that a public hearing shall be conducted with due deliberation and creation of a record for any removal on hearings. Whereas, while not set forth in KRS 83A.0409, the proffering of charges to be considered regarding applicable facts for which removal is sought is to the intention of the London City Council to present Mayor Randall Weddle notice of charges to be considered at a public hearing where the London City Council will consider his removal from office pursuant to KRS 83A.0409. Now therefore, it is resolved by this London City Council as follows. That pursuant to KRS 83A.0409, the London City Council, by this resolution adopts the set forth, the following charges of misconduct or willful neglect against Mayor Randall Weddle. Mayor Randall violated KRS 83A.0703 by hiring and paying persons position not established by the City of London and/or is its city council and without fixed compensation as required by KRS 83A.0703. See also OAG 82-110 and 82-184. Mayor Weddle paid employees in excess of rates or positions approved by council for which has failed to make demand for the return of wages paid contrary to law. See Wagner versus Winford, 78 SW 2D 326, Kentucky 1935. Also see AOG 82-184. Mayor Weddle violated KRS 80.090 by removing members of the London Housing Authority without compliance with that section. Mayor Weddle violated KRS 80.030 by adopting or by appointing members of London Housing Authority without complying with that section. Mayor Weddle directed London Housing Authority employees to not comply with the applicable laws and regulations and our misuse police presence and our made the statement that he was not dicking around. Upon being put on notice that the London Housing Authority did not have properly constituted board, Mayor Weddle called further meetings to harass employees. Mayor Weddle misused the police department and its resources to create a personal protection detail for himself. Mayor Weddle falsely asserted jurisdiction over contractors and FEMA funds not subject to London, the City of London jurisdiction, including false assertions of requirements to permit the London, City of London for covering and repair work not within the city limits. Mayor Weddle engaged in misconduct or willful neglect by not being a resident of the City of London and failing to reside within the city limits. Mayor Weddle used his personal media outlet, Laurel County News Plus, to harass against the city employee. Mayor Weddle refused to hold regular called and scheduled meetings of the City of London City Council and without the permission of a majority of the City Council during the months of March, April, and May 2025 in violation, in violation of KRS 61.820. Mayor Weddle violated KRS 83A.1303 and Ordinance 2023-10 by refusing to enforce and comply with the city's code of ethics. Mayor Weddle violated the law by altering and unlettering, rejecting contracts without consent or notification to the legislative body. Mayor Weddle improperly released a phone call between a victim of a crime and Officer Hale as evidenced by notice from Hale's attorney. Shortly thereafter, he improperly dismissed the officer. Furthermore, that these charges misconduct shall come for a hearing on August 20th, 2025, at 9:00. And the London City Clerk shall cause this resolution and notice a hearing to be served upon Mayor Randall Weddle and provide certification to the council said service. Pursuant to KRS 618232, the majority of the City Council hereby calls a special meeting for that date and time for the agenda bringing. One, called order. Two, appointment of person to preside over the hearing. Three, a public hearing on such charges for executive session to deliberate on such charges under KRS 61.810F. Five, voting on the foregoing charges and such other charges as may be prof by fixing any penalty to include removal from office of the mayor under KRS 83A.0409. Six, setting and calling further special council meetings if necessary to fill any vacancy or take further action. Seven, adjournment. The City Council further directs the city clerk to provide the notice and make the post-inquired KRS 61823 for that special meeting, introduced and adopted this fourth day of August 2025 by the council of the City of London with the following council members
Need a motion on the resolution, 2025-05? Motion to table is on the floor. Second?
I want to make a motion to vote.
There is a motion on the table, on the floor to table. We have to deal with it first. Is there a second to table? Then what was your motion, Kelly?
To go ahead and vote on the resolution.
So you're making a motion to approve the resolution?
Yes, I am.
Second?
I'll say it.
Clerk, do your own call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Binge?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
The resolution will fail without a majority.
I believe that be accurate at the hearing stage.
The statute, which I do not have in front of me because I had no idea this was going to be brought up tonight, requires the majority of the council to approve the charges against the mayor.
And I believe that be accurate at the hearing stage.
The statute speaks for itself.
I agree. I agree with that, that the statute speaks for itself. My understanding is, again, that it requires unanimous vote at the actual presentation of the proof on the charges. And that to get it to that portion just requires a majority vote.
You know, if there'd been a little bit of foresight about this, both Conrad and I could adequately address this, but nobody had the decency to contact Conrad about this, nor me. Or we could have done, we could have brought the statute with us.
My name's TJ Robbins. I've been retained by the City Council to assist Conrad on this matter. So KRS 83A.040 subsection... I'm here to stay, I'm here to assist. I think it's important. I'm saying, what I am saying here, this statute is clear. It requires unanimity for a conviction, but to proceed with the charges, it requires a majority. I'm getting...
Well, our question to hear tonight is, when did the council make a motion to hire you? Because that was not done in the public. So you can sit down until that motion is made. And here's another thing that I would like to know here, and let's get this on the record. Every accusation that you guys have made, you have a due diligence toward the KRS to start an investigation exploratory subcommittee. How come that has not been done on any of this? How come none of that has been done? No, you guys want to do stuff, answer the question, how come you have not done a subcommittee to investigate any of the allegations before bringing the charges? You have not done it, and you know why you've not done it.
Don't forget, you all broke KRA in January, and you probably already did just this too.
Yeah.
I have.
The city attorney is saying that the resolution is dead, it's not done by majority, and so we need a motion to adjourn.
I don't know. I didn't know this was going to be brought up tonight. I could have addressed this because of her, it before, have you?
Brought it up, you should know the law. You don't know nothing.
The statute, the statute to remove a mayor requires, let me, you asked for the statute, Anthony.
No, we're asking for a hearing.
You're bringing charges against the mayor. That's what these are.
We voted Randall Weddle in the air, he was saying.
As a matter of record, council has again, never took, they've accepted these charges without one exploratory committee, one investigation, one time coming to the city hall to look into documentation, without going to the housing authority looking documentation. You read social media, and now you want to charge me with a bunch of lies. You do your job, I deny. For the sake of life, as I'm the mayor, this is bull. The agenda is very clear. You tabled into August, we're here in August, and what are you doing now? Bringing an illegal resolution when you've not done your job, not one of you have stepped into city hall to find the facts. No, but rather, there's some of you that rules the coast streams, who brings in here, and you guys listen to it. This is social media stuff, Jed. Why haven't you done your job as a council member and done an investigation? Point aboard. KRS gives you the ability, why haven't you done it, Jed?
Point to the order, please. I'd like to move to amend the Journal to hire Chris Weest, Attorney at Law, PLOL City.
Another attorney for the city folk to have to pay, but you just couldn't care less about the roads. Motion's on the floor to hire another attorney.
You four students, you paid for it, not the tax dollars.
I can't help it that you guys have made the public mad. So we have a second, who's second? Do your own call.
Mr. Ortega? Mr. Ortega? Mr. Young?
I appreciate you.
Mr. Baker?
Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker, for your counsel. Mr. Ben? For your attorney. Ms. Green and Mr. Weaver.
So, uh, what's your motions now?
Mr. Ortega.
You have a motion and a second for adjournment. Roll call. You've got a motion and a second on the floor. The motion and a second's already there. Roll call.
Mr. Ortega.
No. No. No.
Yes.
No.
I mean, there's two other items to put us on here tonight.
What's the point of order? What's the point of order? Recognizing of the resolution that has passed.
You have it, Anthony. I sent it to you. Anthony, I sent it again. You ought to read it out loud. I think this would be fun. It's like civic class. If somebody apparently didn't pay attention on how the government works, you'd be wrong.
Shame on City Council.
Nancy hired him, but we didn't know anything about his eyes. Jeffrey Young busts on Facebook and he knew anything else. He said, "No, my knowledge, look at this." Our, our daughters are going towards him.
Attorneys can consult with each other, Dan.
And we're still playing.
Well, you don't know. They've not discussed the rate. You don't know that they're paying them.
Hey, you're going right back up, so you're not any better.
SBA's wanting us, they came here tonight to speak. Uh, you can come on up.
I need a point of clarification, please.
Judd, let, let SBA speak. They're here for the tornado.
Appreciate this opportunity, Mayor, again, to address council. Um, I did provide information to everybody noting that we have been extended for another month, uh, for the requests made to the governor, made by the governor. So we will be here offering our, our, um, long-term low-interest disaster loans for folks that were affected by the May sixteenth and seventeenth tornadoes until August twenty-second at the least. So we'll be at our two facilities here in Laurel County as well as two in Somerset, um, regarding the tornado. The information that I provided to you notes that, and I also want to be able to report out, um, and so the centers themselves, again, are open five days a week, six days a week. Uh, starting this Saturday, the centers, um, in, uh, at the rural development, the Rural Development Center over in Plasky County and, and here at the, at the library is going to be closing at one o'clock. So we did, they did alter those hours. But I do want to report that over the course of the declaration, um, we have taken a hundred and ninety-five applications and we have offered sixty-nine loan, loans, sixty-four home, three business, and two idle loans have been offered across the declaration for ten million dollars. A hundred and twenty-nine of those one ninety-five have been here in Laurel County. And we have, uh, offered fifty-three loans for nearly nine million dollars. So definitely, it's easy to say that the lion's share is to help y'alls, you know, everyone here in London and in Laurel County. And we will be here for that time. There was also a sixty-day grace period following that. And then once we leave, we will still be here. We have been able to get the word out at the London Strong Concert. We were at the Food Truck Event. We're helping Hope, we just recently partnered with the Hope for London Group. Um, we're reaching out to the papers and the media to keep, keep getting the word out. So we would encourage anyone with any questions, just come by and see us. We can help them. I know with the Hope for London, we had a couple of folks come up to us that had some issues, and hopefully we got them resolved for the, with those resolved for them. So, again, we're here for y'all, um, and do appreciate this opportunity.
Mr. Chair, I'm asking for a point of clarification, please.
Okay.
Uh, in regards to the resolution, um, to confirm that it's passed.
My suggestion, and I talked just briefly with Mr. Weest about it.
I can hear.
There's some disagreement about the resolution and the number of votes. My suggestion is wait on this, let the attorneys deal with it, and they can advise you.
Thank you. So I just want to give some clarification. This is not a vote. This is not vote on the removal of a mayor. And we can talk about the substance of that. That is what this proceeding is for. And it's, it's fine. I, I, it's fine. The motion is simply to proceed on these charges, and KRS eighty-three point, eighty-three A point oh-four-oh subsection nine governs removal proceedings. Removal itself requires unanimity. Whether to proceed with this requires a majority vote. It is like any other resolution. It is like any other vote. So my view of it would be that it did pass by a five-to-one vote to proceed with this.
My name is Carmen Icarino of Sturgill Turner. Uh, I represent Mayor Weddle in these removal proceedings. I'm entering my appearance at this point. I would say, I would say, I will say, I'm very sorry, I am very sorry for the people of London, having experienced what they have over the last several months to be subjected to this. I think that Mr. Bryson's suggestion is a good one, to allow the attorneys to work this out, to look at this question. The appropriate thing to do would have been to have done your research beforehand. We can confer. We would have to look at dates to have set any hearing anyway. So that would be the suggestion. I think Mr. Bryson's recommendation is very well advised in order to ensure due process and that the Kentucky revised statutes are in fact followed in such an important situation as the removal and nullification of the vote of the people of London. My recommendation is to follow Mr. Bryson's recommendation. You can, you may ask your, your, one of your multiple attorneys that you've retained for counsel. What I would suggest is that the attorneys get together to look at scheduling anyway. And I would also note an objection to the charters that have been filed here. They contain not any sufficient detail of the charges against Mayor Weddle.
I think we're taking the recommendation of the attorney, the City Attorney, as odd as the city for years.
Your motion to appeal? I think the lawyers have said, let them work this out, and then you can come back to it. So the, at this point, the chair has the ability to adjourn a meeting. We're getting nowhere. The chair has adjourned the meeting. The meeting is adjourned. They've adjourned the meeting. The chair has the ability to adjourn. We have adjourned. That is KRS two. Why don't you start doing your job and working for the people in this city and stop putting a bunch of paydays rungs around?